Today is September the 17th, 2019. Our thought for today is not what you, it's not what you got, it's what you use that makes a difference in how your life turns out. That's the exact word. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this board meeting to, to order tonight. Tonight, I'm excited. We have a special guest with us tonight. Someone who's a father figure to me. I've been around all my life. Pastor Eddie Thomason, Eddie Thomason of Good Hope Baptist Church. Sir, if you would, please come tonight. I remember when I was about seven, eight years old, his, his church bus used to come and pick us up, the whole neighborhood and take us to Sunday School and take us to vacation Bible study. And back then, he had a big old Afro and a, and he had a whole lot of hair back there. Pastor, thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And let me thank the Board of Commissioners for the invite. I've been invited several times to come and do this, but this is the first time that my schedule has allowed me to be able to be with you. So, thank you so much for the invite. Yes, I am Eddie Thomason, the pastor of Good Hope Baptist Church out on Highway 162 in the Spring Hill community. I've been serving as the pastor there for the past 37 years. And so, yes, I remember Commissioner Baines when he was just a little boy. And my pride is with, for him is that his ways has changed somewhat drastically. And yes, I did have a head full of hair and big Afro, pork chop sideburns that met my mustache. But over the years, I changed barbers and he never asked me how I want my hair cut. He just does it. So, so we thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if you're ever out in the Spring Hill community on any given Sunday morning, do come by and fellowship with us at the Good Hope Church. We would be delighted to have you. And if Good Hope can ever be of any service to you and to the county, don't fear, don't hesitate to call upon us. We would certainly render our service to you. Amen. Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this hour. Thank you for these, your people. We thank you for what you're doing and what you have done and what you will do. And Father, we pray that you allow your spirit to be a part of this meeting tonight, that it, that we will make wise and just decisions that will lead and guide your people. And then we pray that you will bless those decisions that have been made, that they will be fruitful and multiply. This is in all the blessed we ask in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you for being here tonight. And the Good Hope Church has hosted a lot of different county meetings, community meetings there. I think SLS meetings, I think Solid Waste Authority meetings. And we just thank you for what you do in this community. Thank your church for always having the doors open to help out this community. And I have a little token tonight that I want to give to you.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna say this one thing while we're back to the seat. First of all, Pastor, I just want to thank you personally and you and the Spring Hill community for, for a few years back coming to my defense. When you and the church family and the church family and the community came here and they pulled the building up and said, "No, it's not gonna be done that way." And I want to just publicly thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have our pledge allegiance. We're gonna ask if, we'll ask Mr. Kerr if he will lead us tonight. Thank you, sir.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of America, to the Constitution of our nation, our God, and to the individual, to the individual who has a right to protest.
Commissioner, did you had opportunity to look at the agenda tonight? I seek a motion that we approve. It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? Thank you. Pass is five to zero. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to come up and speak on agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so. You may come up and talk about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Next is our old business. Our BOC minutes from July 23rd. I seek a motion that we approve, please.
Mr. Chairman, since I asked that those be tabled, I move for approval of the July 23rd meeting.
Can I get a second, please? There's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? The pass is five to zero. Thank you. Next is the chairman's report. Main Street is gonna be doing fireworks again. I want to poll the board. The judge has said it's okay to move forward with it as long as they clean up after themselves. So, I just want to poll the board and make sure they're okay with it. Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Schultz.
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson.
Well, I have just one question. We're talking about, are they gonna be doing fireworks at the, on top of the courthouse?
They're gonna be doing the fireworks for the, for the lighting of the square.
On top of the, okay.
Uh-huh. Thank you, Commissioner Cowell. Thank you. Next, we have another special guest with us tonight. Commissioner Schultz has been in contact with her. And so, I'm gonna let her introduce our company tonight, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, those of you that attended the town hall meeting on ethylene oxide may remember Dr. Abby Mudek. Dr. Mudek has a PhD and is a certified nurse midwife and environmental health researcher at Emory University. She is a professor in the School of Nursing and her research focuses on chemical exposures to pregnant women and to children. As a member of the Pediatric Environmental Health Specialty Unit, she works with communities in the southeastern United States to provide health information related to environmental exposures to women and children. So, I invited Dr. Mudek and she brought Nathan Mudek with her as well. They are both here tonight from the Pediatric Environmental Health Specialty Unit. And they're gonna make a brief presentation and then be available for the Board of Commissioners to ask them questions. So, Dr. Mudek, if you would, come to the stand, to the podium place.
We do have a zoning at 7:30 tonight. So, we may have to interrupt at some point and then we'll start back over where we left off at. Thank you.
Hello. Ooh, it's hot. Thank you again for the invitation to come. Dr., I'm sorry, Commissioner Schultz asked me to just kind of give a brief overview of the information that I presented at the community meetings, the town hall that was here. And then I also was present at the one in Smyrna. And I will try to be brief because I know you guys have a lot of questions and you really want to sort through some of these issues. So, let me once again kind of explain who I am. So, Pediatric Environmental Specialty Unit is a group of healthcare providers. And we also have expertise in environmental health science. And so, we bridge that gap that many researchers and clinicians have a hard time doing. With that, we don't have independent ties to anyone in particular. And so, that makes us very appealing to come and present things like this because we don't have, we don't have to follow any certain rules. So, the information that I want to give you is specifically related to the information that I've gathered in my team about health effects and what we know that the chemical ethylene oxide can contribute to. The information is limited. So, it's grim because until recently, we didn't know it to be really something that was needed to spend our time and energy in collecting increased data. There's a lot of issues that are related to how to interpret the data. And so, I will try as simply as possible to go through that with you. The information that we have, that we really are able to give you symptoms as well as predictions about long-term health effects is based on a study of about 18,000 workers. And the workers were mostly men and they were a worker in an industrial ETO plant. And of those workers, they experienced the symptoms of nausea, of gastroenteritis, of dizziness, and then other health effects like confusion and other CNS effects. We don't have good information about pregnant women and we don't have good information about children. But what we do know is that women, pregnant women and children are among our most vulnerable as well as the elderly. And the reason why they're so vulnerable is pretty clear, but it's because of their immune system and it's because of their development. So, the brain is constantly developing in utero as well as up until about five years of age where it starts to stabilize. And until then, it's very penetrable and it can cause the brain cells to not differentiate and develop as normal. And so, that's why that age group is particularly vulnerable. And then the elderly, because again, their immune system and because of their chronic disease comorbidities. So, a little bit about ETO. We know that it does not stay in the body long. It is excreted within 45 minutes to 60 minutes. So, this is really important when you're talking about when to collect a sample from a human person because most of the time, you're, by the time you receive their blood, it's not gonna be tied to an acute exposure. We think that it does accumulate over time, but we have no idea what levels are needed to cause that accumulation. So, therefore, if we were to receive a sample that has elevated, I could tell you nothing about how long that person has been accumulating. The other important thing is to remember that the average of .1 to .3, you've probably heard of this, micrograms per cubic meter, is an average across the country. So, what an average means, remember, is that some fall below and some fall above. And that is our normal baseline, meaning without any kind of added industrial exposures. We know that that data really differentiated, is differentiated based on the location. So, locations that are more rural, the, the natural pristine land, limited inhabitants, those levels are much lower on that low end of average. And then urban areas like Atlanta, levels are on the higher, if not above. Beyond that, areas that are closer to those sterilization sites that we know to be emissions, they're higher than that. So, we can put those pieces together to say, okay, well, we know that this site is a problem. We know that we can assume higher levels because of the geography and because of, of the industrial sites nearby. Once we gather that information, we're like, well, how, how far does it drift, right? How, how far does the emission go outside of the plant? We don't know. That's why they're trying to do these tests. We think it travels less than a mile. We have no idea, based on weather, geography, temperature, how quickly it disperses in the air. So, what we are trying to impress upon others is this idea that gathering data small, right outside the door versus a few steps beyond that, versus a little bit further, versus a little bit further, may give us an idea over time how that disperses. So, without telling you anything concrete, I'm telling you that we need more information about how far out of the plant area it drifts because without that data, we cannot even begin to put the pieces together about health data. We do know that the dose makes the poison. So, if there are higher concentrations in a short amount of time, clearly that is easier to link to health data. The small amounts over time, meaning greater than a year to two years, is very hard to put it all together. There's something in, in the toxicology world that we call acute, intermediate, and long-term. And we define that by saying acute is within two weeks. So, if you do data collection less than two weeks, that is an acute exposure. And you have to keep it in that acute exposure realm in order to talk about health effects. Intermediate would be two weeks to a year. And long-term would be greater than one year. Let me just make sure that I have that correct. One year. Yes, that's right. Two weeks to one year is the intermediate. That's important when you're talking about, are the symptoms that are in this community related to the exposures that we're collecting today? I think the last thing I wanted to talk about before you guys are able to ask your questions that are specific is that the importance of research design in this process. Because without good, thoughtful, realistic, and methodical data collection, meaning the timing, the length of, the length of data collection, the time of day, the information that we gather from geography and from wind and rain and any kind of humidity out there, as well as the frequency. All of that plays a huge role in what we can do with the data once we receive it. If it's not methodically designed with a scientific question in mind, we're not able to really do as much with that. There's too many limitations to the data and it doesn't mean anything.
Thank you. Commissioner, we have a couple of minutes before we have to go into zoning. Who want to go first? Commissioner Henderson?
Well, I just, question I have and maybe I've been to a lot of meetings. Does ethylene oxide, does it cause cancer? I mean, does it?
So, it is now listed as a carcinogen, which means, yes, it has the potential to cause cancer. Those are based on animal models. And so, the answer, short answer is yes. The long-term answer is I don't know how much would cause cancer.
And I understand that and, and I've heard a lot of talk. But if you go out into the community and if you were on them doors and you see the young lady who's got risk cancer. I mean, so, well, you know, they think it may have confirmed it. Well, we, we know it. They publish it that it caused cancer. And if you go over to the housing projects and tell the young lady who just had twins and lost one of her childrens and say, "Well, you know, it's, you know, you could or could not, we think this, or we think that," and they don't even know. Or if you go social circle, I think I'm, we were talking, says about 20 miles, I thought about 30 or 40 miles away, about 20 miles from Covington. And those people, I mean, they are really scared because they believe in the, in the data that, that they have. Maybe not a professor. They, they have said that it caused cancer and they're scared. And they don't see the reason why we are not doing more than what we're doing. And I believe that we should, you know. And I love Emory University because, you know, and, and our, it's the birthplace of Emory University and our visit and it's also in our district. And we have a lot of smart people who are there and which we appreciate and that's what we need. But if you could walk to the doors, as I have, talk to the people over in Covington, me, a young lady who had, had a double risk cancer. And I think you, I know I had a whole different perspective on it. And I think we really need to get to the bottom of it. And I think, you know, and if we are wrong with all the presentation, they say, "Well, there's nothing wrong." So, you know, we gonna get tested. So, how many other people are gonna have cancer that may you, that you may be able to help save them and, you know, rather than just keep on waiting and waiting and then more people may possibly lose their health and possibly in their lives? And so, that's, that's my concern.
Yes, and thank you. That's clearly valid. And I, I think as leaders, we have to be really careful when we're talking to people with these real illnesses and real diseases and, and being able to pinpoint it on one thing. Because I see it as, you know, the lifetime risk of cancer is one in three. So, every third person is gonna get cancer before you die. I mean, that's, it's gut-wrenching, right? It's, it's sickening. But that's reality. And it doesn't tell us what caused it. There's a million things that cause cancer. And we probably all are exposed to lots of things at once that contributes. So, when we talk to people that are experiencing these, these conditions, just because they know one more thing today that contributes doesn't mean that that one thing caused it. And it's, we would love nothing more as a medical profession than to pinpoint it and get rid of it, to ban it. That's what we would all love to do. But it's not that simple. And I wish that we could find out what it is.
Yes, ma'am. Just one follow-up question. I'd be doing this chair. A question that I have, this is a $16 billion plant and we have several here in Covington. And they have hired the best attorneys in the state of Georgia to defend them and public relations people. I think, you know, being a good citizen, if what most people are saying and I think all the data comes back to they, you know, it doesn't cause this, it doesn't cause that. Then why would we be building up a wall against it in the community? That they asked the community to build their plants and build up a wall against them. And not only them, you know, as long as you did the same thing. They went out and got the best lawyers in the state of Georgia and public relations folks just to quiet it down so they can continue to do business. That, you know, and, and I personally believe, and I tell you what, I'm it. I can't speak to nobody else. I said then and I say now, that until we can calculate, till we can get this crisis under control, that we need to pull their permit locally and so they won't be able to do business in Covington, in Newton County, until we get this under control. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Mudek, we have a zoning hearing that we have to do at 7:30. I promise you, it won't take long. So, we're gonna call you back up soon as the zoning hearing is over. Would that be okay?
Of course.
All right.
Whatever you need.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, write down your questions. So, you better ask them once you come back up. Thank you. Ms. Judy, if you would, please come up. This is item number 15 on your agenda tonight.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. Tonight, we only have one zoning petition before you to consider and it is located in District 5. This is a conditional use permit request to allow a home occupation to be operated from an accessory structure. The property is located at 600 Starsville Road and it's on 1.28 acres. It's zoned agricultural residential. And the, the way the ordinance reads, the section of the ordinance that it pertains to is Section 510-310 Subsection I, where it says, "If you're doing a home occupation, the use shall be conducted entirely within the dwelling unit." Approval through a conditional use permit is required for a home occupation located in accessory buildings. So, if our applicant was requesting to just operate a home occupation from the property, then they would be able to do that. But the fact that they want to use an accessory building in conjunction with this requires them to come before this board in order to get a conditional use permit. The Planning Commission did hear this on August the 27th. They did recommend approval, but they did add some additional conditions. Again, this gives you an idea of where the property is located. If you can see the highlighted little blue parcel, it is 600 Starsville Road. The zoning is agricultural residential and it is between Highway 213 and, I'm not as familiar with my roads. My apology. Oh, my goodness. I don't know what the other main road is that's on the other end of Starsville. Else Club, Else Club Road. Thank you. Okay. Here is an overview of the property itself. Again, the property is 1.28 acres. It does have a single-family residential home on it. And the request is to place the building to the rear of the property. In agricultural residential zoning, there is no restriction to the size of the building, nor is there a restriction in ag zoning. There is a restriction to the amount of impervious surface, which they have not exceeded, but they have, they had the right to construct a building. They just did not have the right to use the building in relation to the home occupation. The next slide is to show their site plan. They are proposing, and it is included in the conditions of zoning, to add some additional plannings between the structure and the street view of Starsville Road to kind of give a landscape or a buffer so it's not as visible when you're coming down the road. So, again, our Planning Commission did recommend approval, but they did ask, if this is approved, they would like for you to consider the following conditions. If this is approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit for a landscaping business, conditional subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. One, to the owner's agreement to restrict the conditional use of the accessory structure as follows. Storage of vehicles and equipment for landscaping business. Two, any and/or all required approvals for building permits shall be submitted and approved by Newton County Development Services Department prior to the issuance of a business license. Building permit must be obtained within six months of approval of the conditional use permit. Three, no customer contact will be allowed. Four, conditional use permit to be brought back to the Planning Commission for review two years after approval date to confirm the use is kept in compliance with the conditions. And five, the landscape plan to be approved by the Newton County Landscape Architect. We had conditions one and two originally. The Planning Commission did ask to add for it to be brought back in front of them in two years, which we do have the right by ordinance because it is a conditional use on residential property. And then they also asked for the landscape plan to be approved by the Newton County Landscape Architect. I do believe that since this petition was originally drafted, that the building had, I don't know that it's received a final CO, but again, they had the right to construct the building. They just didn't have the right to use it in conjunction with the business. I do believe they have an active building permit. The building may actually be up. I did not confirm whether or not it was closed. But before we would issue a business license to the property, should this board approve it, we will confirm that all of these things have been met.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is approximately 7:33. This portion of our public hearing where we allow the applicant and those in support of this to come up and speak now. You have 10 minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone in favor of this tonight? Anyone in favor tonight? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Corey Johnson, six hundred Starsville Road. I'll be the owner of the, you know, the building and uh I'll be the one using it for my business. I mean, I don't, you know, e- everything's on the table of what I want to do. So I really don't have a lot to say other than, you know, uh, I will be using it for my business and we will abide by all the rules that it's uh laid out on the line.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that want to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone that wants to oppose tonight? You may come at this time. Anyone wants to oppose tonight? Thank you. Um, that portion of our public hearing is closed. Uh, Commissioner Cowan, take a motion, please.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this permanent one down dash zero 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 four.
Can you speak into mic, please?
Location, six hundred Starsville Road uh with the recommended conditions of the planning board.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. In the discussion.
Yes, I have.
Commissioner Cowan.
Judy, if you don't mind, um if Mr. Johnson's, I think it's Johnson. If Mr. Johnson sells his property, what happens to the conditional use permit? Does it go away?
The conditional, it that would be it, when the planning commission reviews it in two years, um they would have the right if the property was no longer in Mr. Uh, uh, not no longer operated by the applicant and and it swapped hands, they would have the right to um review that at that time and move forward with asking for a renovation. Generally, conditional uses do follow the land. But our ordinance in the administration, we have two ways in which a conditional use can be removed. We can either have it by the planning commission's review or we can have it by the zoning admin- administrator initiating a request, which would come back in front of this board. So there is a way for it not to be tied to the property. You may want to entertain adding a condition that it would be specific for and maybe get Mr. Johnson's name of his business. And if we tied it to that business, only that business would be able to operate the conditional use. That would be a third way to make sure that it only followed with this particular request. Now, they can only operate a landscape business from the property. So you would have to have a a perfect marriage of a sale of a property with someone wanting to operate the landscape.
My thought would be if the property was sold, uh, another owner would use it for a just a storage building, barn, car, whatever he puts in there, which I think is still allowed in A R zoning. Is that correct?
Oh, absolutely. If you have a storage structure, you can store your personal items in it.
Of course, it is. It really doesn't matter per se in some situations. It doesn't. Permit may go away as a conditional use, but the building would not have to be removed.
Correct.
Because it could be a a different use.
Correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The building would be lawful just as an accessory to the property.
What what I was trying to do is a subsequent buyer to the property buying the property with a building on it and then finding out that we pulled the conditional use permit and he's gotta tear the building down. I would not want that.
Oh, no, sir. No, sir. That would not happen. But there's also just, again, for the board's knowledge, there is provisions when we have allowed special uses on properties if they are not operated in the way in which you want to. And I have no reason to doubt that this one will be operated correctly, but we do have provisions to help protect the county and property owners.
I'm fine.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. All in favor? The pass is five to zero. Thank you. Uh, next, uh, Dr. Um, Meek, if you would, please, if you guys will come back. Uh, Board members, please remember that uh she is here to give us information, information alone. Um, she's not here to make any kind of decisions or anything like that. So if you want to make comments, please make them in your commissioner comments. Uh, but if you got questions, please ask her a question. All right. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you had mentioned earlier about testing and once we complete testing, we can really kind of start looking at um health data. And so we know currently that uh our city council is doing testing. And um it should be completed within Oc- sometime around October. So would we be able to take that data from their air testing and be able to provide some of the health data that you referenced earlier in your statement?
No, because it's going to be air data and not um person data. So you're gonna be able to give an an estimate of the concentrations within the, if I understand where the sites are, the eight sites that are within one mile, you'll be able to give an average concentration of what people are exposed to one mile around the um site. And that won't tell us anything about what is what is in people. So that's a different study.
So to add to that, y- and you had mentioned about there was a certain timeframe that you would have to test the actual body. I think you said forty-five minutes?
That's correct.
So would we have to identify specific individuals to actually do that testing? And would they had to have been exposed within about forty-five minutes before we can do that testing to make that declaration that it came from this particular source?
So in order to look at acute data, meaning acute exposure, you're absolutely correct. Um, if you wanted to look at if a person lives around one mile radius for the last, you know, ten years, um and you wanted to see what their average was over time, then you would want to include data from various points of time over time. And that would give you a lot more data points. Um, and you would be able to give a bigger picture about what is the body burden of that person that lives near X plant for X amount of time. Because you're frequently, you know, testing their blood at at random times during the day or, you know, during the week. And that gives you more information about intermittent um exposures. And then if you looked at it for over a year, then you're looking at chronic exposures.
And just to introduce myself, my name's Nathan Meek. We do happen to be married. She's the brains of the operation. Um, but uh my role is I'm an associate director of research projects um in the School of Nursing. I'm also the project manager for the Southeast PESU. Um, so just to say upfront, I don't have any clinical background or expertise, but when it comes to research design, um I could tell you that, you know, if I believe the question is, could we link air testing data to levels in someone's blood and then link that to health outcomes? That would be a really an incredibly different difficult experiment to design, even if that was the intent. Um, and one of the big problems with that is confounding variables. So we know that ethylene oxide doesn't just come from plants where it's produced. Um, it can also be found from car exhaust. It can be found in tobacco smoke. Um, ethylene oxide is used to, some exposure might come from products that it's used to sterilize. So some spices, some cosmetics. Um, there's also off gas- off gassing of ethylene oxide from uh substances like PVC pipe. So there could be baseline levels in your home or in the air that you're breathing and the environment that you live in um that are coming from all of these different sources. So it'd be really difficult, one, to do the testing in the plant and be able to link that to a blood level and a health outcome, um let alone determine, is it maybe coming from car exhaust? Is it coming from tobacco smoke? Um, and then also with health outcomes, there's confounding risk variables there. So does that person also smoke? Um, do they drink alcohol? What are their other risk factors that could be contributing to some of the health outcomes that we're seeing? And so you really need a an incredibly large sample size um to be able to connect some of those dots. Not saying it's impossible and not advocating for or against it, but just that it would be a very difficult experiment to design if you were a researcher going in there trying to answer that research question.
So it really behooves us to focus on overall health and wellness versus one specific thing is causing this specific disease or health issue. So we really need to, because basically for what you're saying, it's gonna be challenging for us to really say that one particular thing is causing some type of disease. So what we really have to do is, as a community, uh, address the concern. But then in addition to that, really focus on personal individual health and wellness. If I'm if I'm correct.
I mean, this is totally opinion, which is what you guys did not ask me to do. Um, but you know, you need some information about what are your exposures related to this plant? And so in a very well constructed manner, I'm not sure what the city has offered and I'm not sure what researchers are on that. Um, but I would highly recommend some air pollution experts um to make sure that it's done well. Don't waste your money if it's not done well because it's not gonna tell you what you want. And so that's something to look at. The other thing to look at would be um what what do we want to do with the information? Um, how are we gonna act on it when I know that there is a number? Say it's low. What are we gonna do? Say it's high. What are we gonna do? And um I think if you can answer those questions amongst yourself, then it makes it a little bit more clear. But you're right, when we start talking about health outcomes, I'm not sure that 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 your city is is robust enough um to really even give you the sample size you're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, guys, for the information. It's been very helpful. I I want to back up and and ask a question about some of the information that you provided earlier and it has to do with the higher levels in the, if I heard this right, I'm paraphrasing it, the the higher levels detected in the bodies in the urban versus the rural areas. And that's the ethylene oxide detected in the bodies verse in those two areas.
Those are air s- air samples, not not body samples.
All right. So air samples. Um, so and you mentioned Atlanta. So there there's the plant in Smyrna. So we're using Atlanta hypothetically or Atlanta specifically? Because I ask that because w- would those levels be with the air test, the levels in the air, ambient air be test higher in, say, an urban area that had no ethylene oxide plant? And I don't know if Smyrna can impact Atlanta's air quality anyway. I mean, I I don't know that. So uh, so so Atlanta may be a perfectly good example, but would there be another example of a city? Would you be would you be just as comfortable saying Tampa, if if Tampa had no ethylene oxide emitting facility? Would would that still hold true? Higher ethylene oxides typically in an urban area versus rural area?
Good question. And the answer is yes. It would still hold true. Urban versus rural um is always gonna have more emissions because of the density and because of the amount of people causing pollution.
Okay. So, you know, that there there's a there's some underlying factors there, obviously. And and I heard, I believe it was, if I remember correctly, the A- the E P E P A had done some E T O testing in another state with no ethylene oxide facility, emitting facility. And they were above the E P A, uh, tested way outside the limits of the E P A at that time also. So that just creates even more questions about what's really causing the E T O in our communities. Right? I mean, would you agree with that that question?
Yes, and I'm not sure um which incident you're referring to, but I do, I did learn about when we were here and at Smyrna that they did a random site testing because of their air, their their grounded chronic or no, um uh, they're they have an air site pollution outside of Decatur that um collects samples over time all year round. And then that is a very stable source of their data collection. And that tested point three three six. Um, and what we were learning is that the levels outside of Smyrna were around that number.
So again, I'm sorry.
Point three three six is what the Decatur Decatur random sample was, which is pretty far from Smyrna. Um, you know, the the data that we have would say that the air could not be contributed to that that plant or that site.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
Um, I have to say that I'm just really spellbound by some of the uh information that you're providing and I thank you very much. I think that one of the things that we are all concerned about is provide as leaders and as commissioners, we've all had someone that's been impacted by cancer. My mother and my father both were impacted by cancer. So we are very concerned about the health of our community and the safety of our community. And we don't want to ignore the fear that's out there, but we also don't want to ratchet up the fear and cr- and create even more fear. And so one of the things that um I hear is that there's are risks and benefits to in to adding to testing. And so help me just um understand that where the risks are by us adding to testing and where the benefits are by adding to the testing. Because what we would be responsible for would be adding testing sites in the county.
So just to clarify, the question is, what are the risks that you add by testing and what are the risks that you could resolve by testing?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
In other words, what what are the benefits by by adding county testing versus the risks of contributing to a additional fear or not being able to get good data, whatever it is?
Yeah, I think, I mean, the, just taking it back a step further is making sure that you you're setting yourself up to be in a position where you um could get more information that's helpful. And so by saying we're doing testing um without having that start to finish plan of how are we testing? How are we coordinating with other groups that are doing testing and what are we gonna do with that information? Um, just to clarify, if that's not done, testing doesn't, it may not add that much, you know, in terms of helping the community. Um, the other risk about, um conversely, if that is well established, we've worked with some experts and just to clarify, we're not experts in testing. Um, our group uh has specials specializes and is expert in the health effects specifically to women and children. Um, so I would say that, you know, you want to work with someone who has that expertise in the testing. And then the the potential downfall is that you might be missing an opportunity to put resources, for example, to reduce the emissions in the first place. Um, and so that could mean working with the the plant um to find ways to reduce um fugitive emissions or ways to improve um what's coming out of the stacks.
So in other words, if we do testing, it may undermine that ability to to work with the to work with the source that we know is in fact the source. Is that?
It could be. I mean, I don't know how much what your resources are. Um, and if there's enough to do the testing and work with, work on lowering the emissions in the first place, then maybe not. Um, and I don't know how much testing costs, but I'm assuming it's expensive.
So he mentioned fugitive versus stacks. Are you guys clear on the difference? Okay, so fugitive emissions are those emissions that are happening inside the facility. And I do not know B D's protocols. Um, I doubt they share those, but um we could find out. And they should be accessible. So what that means is sterilization companies um generally have So what that means is sterilization companies generally have protocols of the process of sterilization. And I know at Sterogenics, they have released those. And for their processing, they require two hundred and sixty day, plus days after it had has gone through a phase of sterilization for the products to be open to regular temperature air. And they have to be idle. And so during that process, off-gassing occurs. We have no clue what that contributes to the overall emissions outside of the plant. Obviously, it's contributing, but we are not able to identify what's coming from the fugitive emission and what's coming from the stacks above. So that's important, because right now, the solutions that they've implemented to the public has been to reduce their stack emissions. So, things like this could be really valuable for y'all's involvement if we could dig a little deeper into the plant's protocols.
So since you said that, I got a quick question. So if we do testing, would we be actually testing emissions that's coming from BD? If we do testing out in the county, which would be more than a mile away?
The research doesn't support that. What I would consider doing is, it sounds like the way they've set it up so far is eight sites within one mile, two without, outside? Okay, so it sounds like what they're using is then as a, as a comparison. So your, your county data would be your baseline of what we say is point one to point three for the entire United States. So, the one-mile radius is what we would consider to be the, the plant emissions. But, it could be beneficial to add testing to that less than one mile, because maybe a quarter of a mile is, you know, significantly higher than one mile. And we just don't know what the air dispersion is like in that zero to one mile.
So are you saying that if the county do testing, we should test inside the city limits? Or one mile before, I mean, one mile away from that, well, less than, or actually?
I mean, I don't think we can suggest a data plan or a sampling plan, but to me, we don't know that information, and it seems much more valuable than looking outside of, of that one mile.
But, that's not our group's expertise. And so you definitely wanna follow up and ask that question to someone who is an expert in air pollution monitoring. That's just really not something that our, that we have the research background or experience to answer that question directly.
Some suggestions could be, you know, ATSDR, who's the toxicology source. They're not attached to EPA, they're independent. Or you could go even outside of that and do like Emory or Georgia Tech. Some of those specialists would be really valuable to that question.
Commissioner? Commissioner?
Sorry, I didn't hear you. You're talking a little bit like me sometimes. So, most of those plants, at least the one here in Covetown, are close to poor neighborhoods. You know, where, like, the housing projects. And there was identified, this, where the, this is the radius which possibly the, I guess, the ethylene oxide may go to. Sales growth in Covetown, in Covetown, yeah. So, I guess the, the question that I'm asking is, what about those folks? Because it, we, we, I'm hearing a whole lot of people commenting, but nobody's talking about the peoples in the community. The people who, who are left over there with almost defenseless and, and, and everybody saying, well, it's, it's okay, there's nothing wrong with it. But yet you go out, and, and whatever happened to people, you go out and ask somebody, try to find what's going on, and right now, I think we're saying, it's a, we don't know. And then you say, just air. So it's not the air. Maybe you need to go and talk to any vision, maybe you need to hire another specialist, but we're doing nothing. But yet, yet and still those same folks, that they identified, when nobody identified, they did the map and put it on TV and told the folks that ethylene oxide caused cancer. And what we telling those, those four folks, and most of them is, is in district four. Wait, wait a minute, ain't nothing wrong, you okay? And yet, you know, nobody's held accountable. And the people are looking to the leaders to stand up for them. And so, we're not doing that, in my opinion. We're talking about all the reasons why we can't, and it should be talking about the reason why we can.
So give me a question, ask her a question.
Well, this, this, I'm, I'm gonna make, finish closing out right now.
No, ask her, ask her a question.
The question is, what are we gonna do to help those folks?
That's something that you can ask.
I mean, and I guess I'm addressing that question to you, Mr. C. What are we gonna do to help those folks and my fellow commissioners? See, because mostly you can go out there and out of sight of the county and breathe fresh air, or what you think is fresh air, on the other side of county and breathe a fresh air, what you think is fresh air. What about us here in town that are struggling? And then nobody has visited that one house, talked to one person. And we know that by we saying we testing there, if it was a high, a high emission of ethylene oxide, then it wouldn't be, because we've heard on TV that they closed the plant down, do whatever they need to do in order to, for it to be, for it to be negative, so it be low. So the question is, what do we do? And I think out of all the, the questions that have been answered, I have answered it. Close it down, then find out what to do.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone, anyone else?
Don't forget, if you do testing while the plant is closed, you won't find, you, you won't find anything in the air for sure.
Okay, Commissioner, I mean, County Manager Kerr, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I, I just, I was curious. You mentioned earlier that there ethylene oxide was present and exhaust gases from an automobile. And there were some, several other sources, for instance, you mentioned PVC pipe. Has there been any testing or is there other, is there any information that says how much ethylene oxide does the average car produce in a year's time? Is that information out there, is that available?
It's a great question that I don't know the answer to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, but we can definitely follow up.
Yeah, we can look and see if there's an estimated.
So, and the reason I ask that is, is because, you know, the person who works, for instance, at the Kroger store, at the Kroger in the booth in there is breathing that in all day long. Would their exposure be the same, say, as somebody who either lives or works close to BD?
Now you're thinking like a researcher.
Pardon me?
Now you're thinking like a researcher.
So, and the other thing too, for instance, with the PVC pipe, if it does, again, you know, what amount would it emit? Because if I heard you correctly, then somebody who works at Home Depot may be subjected, if they work in the plumbing department and they're around the PVC pipe quite a bit, they may be subjected to that and not even know it, and they may have worked there for a number of period of years, or the customers for that matter, I guess. So, you know, have there been, again, it's for the same question, has there been any information on how much that someone might be exposed to something like that? How much does, how many pounds per year does it give off, you know?
I don't think we know that, but we can check and get that through. I'm pretty sure there's not data on that. Most of the data is from the study that she mentioned earlier with the eighteen thousand workers in the plant.
And the levels in the blood, was that done from actual blood tests? Or was that determined based on using modeling, or how was that? I, I know you said that you can't determine.
From the worker, the worker's study?
I'm sorry?
From the worker's study?
Yes, yes.
That was blood and urine.
Okay, but there was no way to determine how much exposure or how many year, whatever period of time would, how, how long it would take to indicate that you had, or that you would find residuals or residue of that inside someone's blood, correct?
That's correct. It's more of an acute exposure at that point.
So, do you know, do people absorb the gas at the same rate? For instance, if you and I were exposed, that stuff was blowing at us, would I absorb it at the same rate that you would?
That's a great question. The answer is, if you are an adult that has a normal respiratory rate, so as long as you don't have a, a respiratory illness or asthma, we would probably breathe at the same rate. But children actually breathe a lot faster. And, and they, because they're so small, they actually take in a lot more of the chemical.
But you don't know what the rate is that you accumulate that in your blood, is that right?
That's right, because that depends on things like metabolism and your excretion rate and any kind of issues related to your kidneys or your liver when they're processing the chemical.
Or I guess other, exposure to other things that may-
That may change the chemical or slow it down, that's right. There's so many factors.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys, anything else?
I would just like to say too, to address Commissioner Henderson's points and questions about what can we do. I think, you know, it would be smart to maybe view this as a starting point for this conversation. We're always here with the Pediatric Environmental Health Specialty Unit. Again, we specialize in the health effects, but we're here to answer those questions. Happy to talk anytime. And then if there are questions we can address, we're fairly well-connected to the, the individuals that might be able to answer some of those questions specifically around testing. And so, you know, we can leave our information, we'd be happy to follow up offline if that's something you'd like to do.
We, we might wanna do a, I think, I know Commissioner Henderson would, I think we might wanna do a work session with you guys and maybe some air quality testing, engineers or scientists. So we might wanna look at doing that. I see all the boys, remember shaking their head, so. And, and, and so we'll try to get you guys to come back and do a joint, joint work session with us. And doing that.
Should we leave those with you specifically, or just leave them out at the door?
Yeah, we'll take them. If you would give them, Brian, if you would get those, we would definitely get them. But guys, we greatly appreciate you coming out and, and just giving us, giving us the info tonight. As you know, our community has been, been affected by this. And there's a, there's a uproar in the community. And we wanna make sure that we get the right information to, to them, to the people. And, okay, I'm sorry.
One other thing, Ms. Chairman, and not to interrupt you, but if we do a work session, could you, in any data that you may bring or any, any thought process you may go through, any research process you may go through before we get back together, could you, could you factor in the, the fact that this community, this county does not do emissions testing? And what that might mean to, to, to the overall scope of what we're looking at here? Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
But yeah, so we will be contacting you guys back and hopefully we can get the work session together with some, some more air quality tech, technicians or experts. And we'll do another work session. But we greatly appreciate you coming tonight and, and informing the people here. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm gonna be very brief. We've got a few, a few things to show you here on the, on the magic of the overhead here. We, during this past month, we've had twenty-three new hires and we've had twenty-five separations. So our population has remained pretty constant. If you, next slide, please, Brian. If you look at, you can see the number of permits that we're issuing. We've issued forty-five new residential permits, and we've issued one primary commercial permit. And you can see the value of that one primary commercial permit is pretty significant, forty million dollars. For a total of value of forty-eight million for the past month. And next slide, please. That's just to recap of the issue of our grant activity. Next slide, please. Public Works, you'll see the number of, of work orders there that we've processed, with the bit largest being in District One at a hundred and four. And the least number of requests that we had were in District Four with forty-one. You'll also see the LME resurfacing that's been going on. Won't necessarily go through all those, but you'll see that we've been in all, all of the districts except for, for District Five. We've had some SPOS projects, culvert replacement, Sewell Road, and we're still working on the reclamation in District Five of White Road. Next slide, please. Wanted to bring this to everybody's attention. Ms. Hayes, our Clerk of Superior Court, is offering free notary training. So if anyone here in the audience in the county would like to become a notary, she's offering the training for free of charge. And it's a good thing to have if somebody in your family to be a notary so that you can have documents notarized and so forth. So next slide, please. Here's some pictures. Rivers Alive is coming up September twenty-eighth. Wanna make sure everybody's aware of that. I think the muster place is at the Longhorn Steakhouse. If you show up there in the morning, you'll get a biscuit and coffee, and then you'll get some trash bags and be sent out to help clean up the river. So next slide, please. We are gonna have our Strategic Plan Community Meeting on October the fourteenth. We will be giving a report to the community on what we've worked on so far and the things that we've achieved and what are becoming, or what is becoming a part of our culture within Newton County Government. Next slide, please. And remember one Newton. So, thank you. The only other things that I wanted to mention to you all and mention to the public is remind everyone of Census twenty-twenty that is coming up. And so we wanna make sure everybody responds to the questionnaires. And you can go online, you can do it by phone, you can do it on your, on your laptop or your computer and so forth. So, wanna make sure we get a good count. I've been fortunate enough to be part of a leadership training seminar that the Sheriff's Office is sponsoring. Quite a few people from our county, as well as some of the neighboring counties have been there and from as far as way as South Carolina are taking part. It's an excellent program, and I, I think it's something that's really been very worthwhile. And, and we're holding it over, it's, rather than being held over at the College and Career Academy, which is helping to show off some of the very positive things about our county. And this morning, had an opportunity to make a plug for the county and tell them to spend lots of money before they go home. So, I also wanna remind you, you Steele, who has been our chairman for the Elections Committee, or our Elections Board for the past twenty-one years, Mr. Steele is ninety-three, and he's decided it's time to hang up his hat and enjoy retirement a little bit. So there will be a retirement celebration for Mr. Steele on October the first here at the courthouse from four thirty to six thirty. Want everybody to come. And finally, I just, we have put together an RFP for a grant writer. And so what we are wanting to do is to see what is out there and see if, if we can arrange to have a grant writer who specializes particularly in public safety and Parks and Recreation to do, to write grants for us, make applications on a contingency basis. And so we're putting that out there, should hit the street in the next day or so. And hopefully that'll, will bring some additional much-needed money into our public safety and into our Parks and Rec Department. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. A little question, so, so I can be clear in my mind. We're not gonna give them like we did one other time before on the commission. And you wasn't here, and I think if I was the only person here, we gave some like fifty thousand dollars. And the only grant that we received was one from Walmart, and everyone I could have went over there and did myself. So, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that this time, so it's on contingency. If they get some, they get a percentage of, of the grant, I don't know.
Well, there's several different ways to do it, and this will all be part of a proposal. But ideally, what we would like to see, I mean, certainly, there may be someone who wants to make a proposal on a flat fee, and of course we would consider that. But there are a lot of individuals and companies who will, consulting services, who will write the grant for a percentage of the grant award. And the only time that they make any money is when an award is, or when a grant- And the only time that they make any money is when an award is, or when a grant is awarded. And so there's, that's incentive for them to put together a quality application for us. And it's something that we don't have a lot of expertise in and also the personnel to do. So this is a way that we can really help ourselves and leverage what money we would pay to somebody and to, to possibly enlarge some money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. Next is the Senate Agenda. We do have a appointment tonight in District Two. Commissioner Mason, we want to introduce your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If he could please stand, Mr. Alan Millhouse. Mr. Millhouse, of course, is married to his wife, Lillian Millhouse, for 14 years and a resident of Newton County for eight years. He's the father of four, one son and three daughters, three grandchildren. He's worked in transportation for 20 years, worked in the TV industry for seven years at TBS. He's a leader in his church, mentored youth and men in the church. He's worked in youth ministry, worked in outreach ministry, serving the needs of the community. He's worked alongside the Criminal Justice Reform Committee to advocate and introduce the Ban the Box Initiative, bill that Governor Deal passed in 2015 for returning citizens. He's part of the Returning Citizens Initiative through the Governor's Office for four years. He's counseled youth in foster care in group homes. And overall, he just has a passion to serve. And so I am excited to have Mr. Alan Millhouse join our Planning Commission. Mr. Millhouse, as you saw tonight, some of what our, our Planning Director talked about, those will be some of the things that you'll be sitting down discussing and, and working through with our Planning Commission. And so we're excited to have Mr. Alan Millhouse represent District Two.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, for your willingness to serve this community. I greatly appreciate you. Thank you. Commissioners, you had an opportunity to look at the Senate Agenda. I seek a motion, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes five to zero. Thank you. Welcome aboard, sir. Next is our financial. Ms. Brittany. It's just, Brittany's doing a great job filling in, guys. So congratulate her for just helping keeping things going.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening. These are the June 2019 preliminary financials. As we have not had our audit yet, so there still could be some changes with some adjusting audit entries at the end. And our auditors are scheduled to be here in October. Okay, the first section I'm going to cover is general fund revenues. So we ended the year at 105% with our revenues. So we did have an increase of revenues in what we budgeted. Mainly our increases were the loss collections and an increase in TVAT. And here's a bar graph just demonstrating how much our revenues were each month this year. And another one that shows budget versus actuals. And this section is our general fund expenditures. And we ended the year at 93.39% of our expenditures. We realized most of our savings here in our contingency positions that were not filled throughout the year. Most departments were within around 90 to 98% of what they asked for in the budget. The ones that were not quite at what they asked for were mainly vacant positions. So if someone left and there was a month or two lag where that position wasn't filled, that's where mostly everything that wasn't spent in those budgets. You will see the biggest one, the percentage only being 24% in non-departmental, as I mentioned, the contingency positions. And the facilities budget is, is over budgeted due to the ABM savings not realized the way that they were budgeted this year. And we hope to make up for that in the contingency position so we can do a budget transfer to correct that. And here is just the year-end revenues versus expenditures. And our general fund balance, that generally isn't calculated until year-end once audit is complete and all adjusting journal entries are done. So we're still, that number could fluctuate depending on any adjusting entries. And our enterprise funds, they all had a pretty successful year this year with Water Fund ending at 102% of their budgeted revenue and only spending 70% of their budgeted expenditures. Solid Waste brought in 103% more revenue. And their expenditures were only at 84% of what they budgeted. And then Gaithers was only at 79% of their revenue budgeted, but they did only spend 71, so they did also end the year on a positive note. 2005 SLOSS is still open. This has been unchanged since the last time you've seen this slide. We're just finishing up paying the COPS administration debt. And that will be, we'll just be paying on that over the next couple of years. 2011 is almost wrapped up. We have the Fire Department who's going to begin the next station. And they're working on RFPs and getting all that finalized now. And then the last remaining project we have is the Historic Jail Project. 2017 SLOSS, we're in the process now of beginning all the bonded projects. So you should start seeing an increase in that. I will say on this next slide, there is a correction to what's in your agenda packet due to a formula error. But we have so far collected 3.5 million in excess of what we had budgeted. So we are on track to collect more for the 2017 SLOSS. Impact Fee Funds, we ended the year collecting 979,000 in impact fees. And Debt Service Summary is also unchanged as we do not have any debt payments generally in June. And that's it.
Mr. Kerr, you have...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Brittany, if you would, if you could just go back for a minute and explain the ABM and how that impacted. You and I spoke about it and I believe there's some issues with the journal, the way the journal entry shows. So for the board's edification.
There was a credit budgeted in an expenditure account to show a savings that we were going to realize of $425,000, which we did not see that realized in the expenditures of water, sewer, electric, gas. So therefore, the facilities budget is not equal as to realizing the savings.
Ms. Kerr.
Also, the Finance Department has worked on and is continuing to work on a building-by-building breakdown. In, over the last year, there were savings that were shown in this building and with the admin building. But the remainder of the buildings have to be analyzed too. The other peculiar thing about that particular line item within the facilities budget is that the guarantee from ABM was only on the buildings that they actually did work on. And there was only portions of those buildings where there was actually changes made. So it's taken a long time to get that analysis. And so that's why some of the information we have currently is, is incomplete. But I did want to make sure that we kind of talked about that for at least a minute.
And we're working on doing an analysis of all the buildings. So hopefully we can get a better budgeted number. Because would this be in the first year that we needed to budget for the savings? It was kind of just our best guess. And obviously, the $425,000 was not probably the best number. So once we finish our analysis, we may can look at budgeting that differently in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you so much. You did a great job tonight.
Thanks.
Next item, number 10. Recreation Commission requesting permission to enter into a contract with a land of fire and restoration. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is a, a project, the Dyna Circle Park over there has been underway for quite a while. There's been improvements that have been made along the way. And this is part of the park improvements in District Four that Commissioner Henderson has been working with. This is for a bathroom facility that'll be installed there. This does include the septic system and the drainage field and, or drain field. And also it, the bathroom will be of a type of construction that will be destruction resistant and also resistant to vandals. So it is an expensive project, but that's typically what the cost of, of an isolated restroom like that would, would run.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion of Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. It was, it was a, first of all, if I make the motion, it was a special product because we had to do it on the hill on the property we had purchased about, I think, four or five years ago for the community per their request. And so it was something that had to be done and we budgeted. It was placed on the ballot for the citizens of Newton County to look at, to approve through SLOSS funding, that and several others. But anyway, to make a long story short, they are very happy that we are finally beginning to do their project. Their little community park that will be ran by Recreation over in the area. And they're very excited and hope that it will soon be, be, they'll be through with it so they can give their grand opening. And they're hoping, they'll well, it will go along with it too as well. So with having said all that, I make a motion to approve as presented by our county manager.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. GSI is requesting approval of 2020 flyover of Newton County this winter to acquire aerial imagery. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Tim Lawrence, our GIS Director is here tonight. I'm going to ask Tim to come up and talk to you a little bit about this flyover and what standard information we hope to gain as well as some additional information. So Tim, if you'll come up and talk. Thank you.
How you doing?
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Thank you. Staff is requesting the purchase of a 2020 flyover. We fly generally every three to five years, all 279 square miles. Our last flyover was 2016 and we're due. The imagery is a useful tool for staff and the public. It's on the website, Q Public Tax Assessor's website. And it really supports all of the five strategies of our Strategic Plan. But in particular, it would be Strategies C and E, which is economic development. Useful tool for that and also public safety. We get a lot of requests from our EMA folks, Fire, Sheriff. And in this instance, we are sharing costs with City of Covington and the Water Authority. Each will share like one-third of the cost.
Thanks, sir. Commissioners, any questions? I seek a motion, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you, sir. Next is Public Works, it requests permission to purchase a Caterpillar PM 620. I think I seen just, just...
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Well, as, as you know, about five months ago, our milling machine burned up. And this is the fourth time it caught on fire and we've just gotten it repaired. This electrical fire gets in, the hoses apparently were leaking and there's electrical short and it caught on fire. So we did end up getting about $51,000 for it. It was basically totaled by the, the insurance company. And we started renting a Caterpillar coal planer, which is a milling machine. I have a picture of it in the package. So we are, what we proposed to do is purchase the one that we're renting. And Yancey is willing to give us credit for our rental payments less the interest, which is about $20,000 for the six months. And so the total purchase price, and this is not counting the $51,000 we're getting from the insurance company, is $389,000. And we'll be using the SLOSS money to do that.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next is discussion and approval to request a TAP grant for the 278 CID. Ms. Morgan.
Good evening. I'll be short and sweet. I'm here tonight to ask your permission to apply for a TIP solicitation, which is a TAP grant, LCI grant and block, surface block grants from the ARC. The call is due October 11th. We do not have our package complete at this date. We're waiting on some additional information from GDOT. And we're trying to determine if we will be applying for the grant, including their safety and operations with us. If that's the case, it'll be a $17 million grant with a donation or with a cost contributed from them of $9 million. Or it will be somewhere between $6 and $8 million for, to complete the streets, which means sidewalks on the south side, multimodal trail on the north side, landscaping, streetlights, underground utilities and so on. So, but I believe I need your permission to apply for this grant because you will be a sponsor. And in that case, when we do the application, I will have to have you sign a letter that says that you sponsor the project and the amount of dollars that you will commit, which is $320,000 from SLOSS. And then I'll, the city will have to specify theirs as well as GDOT will have to specify theirs. Once we apply for the grant, that's all we need. Once we, if we are fortunate enough to receive the grant in February, we should know. Then at that point, we will have to do an intergovernmental agency agreement that's, again, just restates all that. Who's going to be responsible, which the city will be the lead agency on the grant. And they've committed to maintenance for the roundabouts and the medians. And you will just be committed to the appropriation of $320,000 from SLOSS.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Schultz.
So is this 2017 SLOSS?
Yes, that's correct.
And what, did that come out of that large bucket of money for Public Works?
For Transportation, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so was that, was that already, was that included in that amount? Or is that something that we've decided since this time?
It was something that you all decided since that time. Ms. Morgan came to the board several months ago. And if you recall, presented some information to you. And in order to, and in order to move ahead with the TAP grant, we would need the commitment for the city and the county that they would, we would do the match. The TAP grant, the application period was delayed several times, if I recall. So that's why she's coming back to you now to, so that she can go ahead and make the application and move ahead with, with applying for the money.
And this expenditure was recommended for approval from the SLOSS Committee?
They, they did, yes, ma'am. They, they did, yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Um, do I have approval to go forward?
I'm about to do it in a few seconds. Commissioner, I seek a motion, please.
Thank you.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next on agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity where we lost, allow citizens to come up and make comments. You have three minutes to do so, please come up and state your name, your address for the record, please. You may comment this time.
My name is Sarah Doby, one thirty-five hundred Ridge Drive. Since we had the work session at six is what brings this to mind again, as I have always advocated for the poorest of the poor regardless of any other condition of them besides being poor, and all people on fixed incomes, and that elections are coming up in twenty-twenty, to please ask your state legislators to repeal the exemption from the exemption of food so that the new T-SLOSS will not be on food, because the very poorest of the poor are the ones who are greatly affected by this. Many people don't realize that there is an exemption. There is an exemption to the state income of the state sales tax, but there's an exemption to that exemption for the, all of the SLOSS to have the same exemption as the regular sales tax does. So that needs to be in the platform of candidates for office, particularly for the General Assembly. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is time to make comments, Commissioner comments, you may comment this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Michael Jones, I live at four-four-five Gregory Road, and we have an issue with cross traffic from Al Kobe over the Flat Rock Road, and it kicked, the road is unpaved, and it kicks up a lot of dust and debris, and then people with breathing issues as well as that. Just seeing if we can get that road paved, a look at possibility, possibly getting that paved, you know?
What's the name of that road again?
Gregory Road.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Robert Bozetta, I live in Jamestown Community, five-ten Fourth Avenue. It's come to my attention, five years I've lived there, we have poor rainwater runoff, we have no gutters and ditches to clear this water out. The few that are in there are being just inundated with sludge and dirt, trash blown about or thrown out windows, and I've had the Public Works Department, it was gracious enough, come out and clean these ditches and get rid of four dump truck loads of trash that was just tossed out by maybe some people in the community, maybe some not, and I was wanting to know that if there's something that can be done by the commission to see about these, they're stagnant water and some of these, a lot of children in this community, and if we could get somebody to research this, to get maybe storm drains and gutters, to better get rainwater and storm water out to where it needs to be as, instead of running across the street, for example, sometimes four inches deep, I've seen it, that would be nice.
Can you give, can you give me the name of that road again, please?
Yes, it'd be Lee Street. In the Jamestown Community, Lee Street comes all the way to a sharp right and turns into Fourth Avenue, which is the lowest point in elevation of the main part, main body of the community, and the ditch is just stays so full of sludge, dirt, leaves, for example, and it clutters up the cover pipes, and they're unable to disperse this water.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Duncan Lawrence, six-thirty-Fifth Avenue, Covington, Jamestown. We, on behalf of my community, I was born and raised there, and I've talked to Mr. Running on different occasions, I tried to contact you, but I couldn't get you, Mr. Bain, but it's, like I say, I was born and raised there, and we can't get no support from the county. And the houses, they need help, you know, call the Code Enforcement, they won't give us no help, cars sitting around, Code Enforcement won't do nothing. We just, I'm just, we just at a dead standstill with, with the county. Just wanted to reach out, see if I can get some help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm still catching my breath from running up the stairs, forgive me. To my commissioner and all chairperson, everyone, I'm Rebecca Ali, and I'm a missionary in Jamestown community that Mr. Lawrence just addressed, and I was supposed to be the person addressing it, but I was tied up until a few minutes ago. Anyway, I'm not sure what all he has said, but we've been working with our commissioner along with you, Chair, I know that you're familiar with this. This come in December is going to be two years since we started. We started the cleanup with Lori and keep Newton County clean and beautiful. We have done a few, two of those cleanups, actually, my commissioner has been out there several times. He brought with him Carlos, don't remember Carlos' last name from Code Enforcement, and Carlos, when I first met Carlos many years ago, it was about five years ago, Carlos pretty much just treated me like a skirt. I was good enough to go out with him at nights and meet him at a hotel or anything of that nature, but I wasn't good enough for him to realize that I am a minister of the Gospel of Christ, a missionary in this community that needs something done. And so I gave up for a long time until I met our commissioner, and I thought with our commissioner being his background, the attorney of, one of the attorneys for the city or chairperson, I believed that I was going to get some results. And last year, when I went to one of the medians at Good Hope, I was told that that was going to be in effect by March of this year. Now, I'm telling the community, yes, yes, I'm showing up, I'm talking, I'm making phone calls, I'm doing everything, we're going to get something, nothing has, almost nothing has been done. We still have all of the burnt house on the first street, the biggest sore in our eyes in the community, it's still there. All the other abandoned building that endanger our children are still there. We, we were promised better drains, you know? Nothing has happened. We got one day of garbage pickup, and I had asked because we're out in the country, countryside off of two thirteen, all, all by ourselves, we don't have sidewalk, we don't have transportation, anything of that sort, can something be done about the garbage pickup there more than once a year? But we really need some attention. I don't know what it will take for Newton County to give us some attention and treat us as citizens. Okay, we don't pay a whole lot of taxes, our zip code is not, oh, you guys live there? You know, what is it we need to do? Do we look, we don't have the right color, we don't have the right gender, we don't have the right zip code, what is it that we have to do to get something done in our community? It's been years. It's been years, and we've been patient. This December will be two years.
Thank you, ma'am.
I am sure if this was other neighborhoods in our city, our county, it would be different.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thanks, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Schultz. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this won't be long. I just want to just touch on the ethylene oxide issue that we, that we have in Covington, that seem, it is a crisis, almost a senior big crisis. This is not the first time something like this has happened, but the tactics that they normally take are the same, like it's Cellar Grove Community, and, um, Global, SRG Global Company, when they was, when, when TCE was being leaked or had been leaked upon the earth and went on some bedrock, and the fumes were coming up, they came out and they put, they put monitors in people's homes, and some they paid a hundred fifty dollars on, they paid more, but make a long story short, that too caused cancer. Same tactic, what they did was, hey, they went and got the best lawyers they could find, they went and, then they went and got the best media people they could find, and it flowed away, everybody forgot about it. And there was a lot of people who had cancer out there, too, and still do, but there was something else coming that way. There was the BD, CR, SR, SRG BD Board, and it toxic through there, so they had double jeopardy. And when I was talking to people, one lady made out ten people who had died from cancer just in that community. We don't have to do nothing, know how to say nothing, but when it comes to your house or where you live, hey, it'll be a whole different story when one of your loved ones who have, who are dying from cancer, and you wonder where it's coming from, and people will come from everywhere, chase, oh, it's okay, they'll get up in your, I call it the horse and pony show, I know they get mad at me, but it's okay, horse and pony show and say it's all right, they don't live in your community, don't know nothing about the community, don't even know the folks, and they gonna tell you it's all right, he's dying, it's okay, it's okay, keep on listening, and keep on putting these same folks in office, and they're gonna continue to do the same thing to you that they've been doing for years, and they're gonna let it keep, continue to be health risks in our community, Cellar Grove Housing Project, where the poor people live, that's where they put those, that type of stuff at. They gonna be the same stuff, keep on going for them, and you'll find yourself, it gonna stop blowing this way, back this way, where most of them, my decision lives, gonna stop blowing your way. So I say we need to put a stop, and I tell you what, what the stop is going to be, you need to pull their permit, I'm telling you, you have to believe me, it's the truth, we pull their permit until we get this under control. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The people from Jamestown are absolutely right, and I've mentioned this to Code Enforcement and County Manager over the last couple of years, that needs to be some work down there. I know we've tightened up some of our Code Enforcement stuff, I know our probate judge is willing to, to deal with those issues if we can get them in front of them, so I will, you know, I was kind of waiting till we added those additional Code Enforcement officers. I really think Jamestown is a full-time area down there to get something going, and if I just had a, just let me borrow a front-end loader, I go down there and clean it up, but I know it, that's not, that's gonna get me in trouble. But there is a lot of problems with, with water drainage, they're absolutely right, and I don't blame them, I, I don't understand exactly what they mean by, they're tired of waiting, because it does need some cleanup down there, and that's a nice neighborhood down there, I mean, everybody's always worried about going to Jamestown, I am, it bothers me, but it, it is a nice neighborhood, yeah, and people are very friendly, and it was a good area down there, but they do need some help from the county, so I would just ask for the county manager and Judy and your Code Enforcement people just to start being a little more aggressive in some of those abandoned properties. And to address the issues of the ETO tonight, I'm not going to go as far as JC and say pull their permit up, I understand that logic, but I don't think we're there yet. But I do think, you know, I listened very intently to what they said, they did, Nancy, I appreciate you asking them and coming because they did provide a lot more information, but I'm, I'm still feel like, one note, one note I made on what she said was, they have no idea how far ethylene, ETO, ethylene oxide travels, they think it's less than a mile, but she wasn't sure about that at all. They don't know that, and they said they need a thoughtful data collection, need a methodology for determining the meaning of the data that's collected, and I agree with all that. Still, though, the point is, data needs to be collected, and we need to, we need to cross that threshold first and say, okay, we're going to commit to data collection. Figuring out the nuts and bolts of that, you can give that to the expert, but we've got to at some point say, we're willing to do additional testing in the county, and verify what the costs are going to be, and we'll be willing to address that. That's just my opinion on that. But I want to ensure the community that I think everybody here on this board commissioners is committed to make sure that we eliminate any possible health and safety hazards, and I just want people to understand that, we will be forward with that, I'm sure, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. There is a need for executive session tonight, so I seek a motion that, and I don't think we would not be taking a vote, for litigation purposes. I seek a motion that we move into executive session. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. All in favor? We are in executive session. Thank you guys for coming tonight.